Seven o'clock, chief on this minute to order.
Let's go.
By the leaders.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country, one nation, under God, in the name of the republic, the free and fair world. I have a roll call please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Giraud?
Mr. Golic?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Luen? Mr. Valeski?
Here.
I'm gonna recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes for November nine and November twelve. Second. It's been moved and second. All eyes. Any other vote?
All in favor?
Huh? All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm a little rusty.
Opposed?
Opposed. Motion carries, all right. We've got a couple of presentations. We've got some fall sports recognition. Mr. Newman's gonna help us out here this evening. First is Cambridge Springs Girl Soccer.
Okay, first, Cambridge Springs Girl Soccer Team, which consists of girls from Cambridge Springs High School and Sagertown High School and co-op, had a historic run to the Western Pennsylvania Finals this season. The team set many records and had firsts this season, those which were a record number of wins at fourteen, a record number of playoff wins in a season at three, the first District Ten championship, first PIAA State Tournament win, and first ever District Ten won a girl's soccer team to play in a state semifinals.
So congratulations to the girls, and we appreciate all their hard work and support in Pencrest.
Next, we would like to recognize the Maplewood Girls Volleyball Team. After completing a tough schedule against many AAA and single A top caliber teams, the Maplewood Girls Volleyball Team completed their season with a tough loss in the state quarterfinals. The Tigers had an outstanding season with a record of twenty and three. Their only losses came against Clariton, top team in the state in single A, and eventual regional co-champions Cache in the early part of the season. The third loss came to Philipsburg Osceola from District Six in the state quarterfinals. The Tigers were led by seniors Kai'Sia Thomas, Madison Crawford, and All-State Selection Chloe Leach; juniors Avery Bruno, Eve Fuchette, Tristan Robinson, and Madeline Rankin. The team was a lot to look forward to in the future with sophomores Chloe Cox, Madison Virgona, McKenna Crawford, All-District Selection Sadie Thomas, and Bailey Barnell. The Tigers finished with a Region Four title, District Ten title, and a trip to the state quarterfinals. Congratulations to the Maplewood Girls Volleyball. Next, we'd like to recognize the Sagertown High School Girls Volleyball Team. Sagertown Girls Volleyball Team had a historic season this year as well. Our overall record was fifteen and nine. We played a demanding non-conference schedule that prepared us for regional play and the postseason. We won our first region league title since 1976 and our school's second District Ten title, the last being in 2010. The girls worked extremely hard over the last few years. We've had a rigorous offseason schedule that has often started days after our previous season had finished, including this summer with the pandemic. We were able to start having workouts in July that led to a safe, successful season. The team was grateful that we could have a season this year, and despite some of the restrictions, we had fun, worked extremely hard, and enjoyed the success that comes with those things. We had three seniors on the team that contributed heavily to our success over the last few years. They have helped us improve every year and exemplify what a student athlete should be. They are Ava Jones, Dixie Kindervater, and Amber Costello. In addition to the team's success, we also had some individual awards this season. Amber Costello made first team All-District Ten. Brittany Howke made first team All-District Ten, PAVBCA All-State Team. And Avery Brimer got first team All-D10 and PAVBCA All-State Team as well. The future's bright for the Sagertown High School Girls Volleyball Program. JV Team also had a successful season, and we have a lot of returning players from this year's varsity team. Everyone's looking forward to a successful 2021 season, from Coach Johnson. Congratulations, girls.
And the last one this evening?
Lastly, we have Sagertown High School Cross Country. The Sagertown High School Cross Country Team had much success this season as well. The girls varsity earned the right to compete in the District Ten championship by being a single A qualifying team from Region Three. At that championship, Sam Hetrick placed fifth to the lone Pencrest qualifier for states this year. Then at the PIAA State Championship Race on November seventh, Sam placed twenty-fifth to earn his second straight medal at states, becoming only the third two-time medalist in Sagertown history. He was the highest District Ten finisher at the race and was the sixth fastest runner from District Ten at all levels. Additionally, the junior high boys and girls teams were both Region Three champions as well. Congratulations to a successful season.
Congratulations to all those folks. Lot of hard work.
Yeah, considering.
Yeah, let's go.
You've done an awesome job this year. Do we have anybody to address the board?
So we've got one student delegate representative. I'm gonna play that for you now, one moment.
Good evening. My name is Haiku Peter. I'm here to update you on what's happening at Sagertown High School. Teachers are working hard, and many are providing the option of synchronous learning. Many Sagertown students are logging in and staying connected from home. Building Administration is proud of everyone's efforts for continuous learning and improvement for our Panther families. All juniors will be taking the ASVAB test on December sixteenth and seventeenth. The first boys' basketball game will be held at Sagertown on Friday, December eleventh, against Greenville. You can watch the game on the livestream. The link will be posted to AllPantherPressMedia and is available at Pencrest.org under the Athletics tab. The Sports and Entertainment Marketing Class is busy updating their site for the winter sports. You can visit the site at the link provided. The following students have been selected as honorable athletes by Erie Times News. In football, first team defense, Jaden Regal. Second team offense, Jane Reisinger, Zach Yoder, and Josh Perrine. Second team defense, Jake Reisinger and Landon Caldwell. In golf, Erie Times News All-District Second Team, Dylan Blanchbaugh. Region Three All-Stars First Team, Dylan Blanchbaugh. Region Three All-Stars Second Team, Max Fuller and Joseph Grundy. In volleyball, first team All-State Class One A PBCA, Brittany Howke and Avery Brimer. District Ten All-District Small School Team, Amber Costello and Brittany Howke. Region Three All-Stars First Team, Brittany Howke, Avery Brimer, and Amber Costello. Second team, Ava Jones. In cross country, Region Three Runner of the Year, Sam Hetrick. Region Three First Team, Sam Hetrick. Region Three Second Team, Nathan DeYoung. Region Three First Team for the ladies, Paige Fuller and Emma McAdam. Region Three Second Team for the ladies, Cassidy Oylund. Thank you for your time. Make sure to follow us all at PantherPressSHS on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
Thank you, Haiku.
Thank you.
Is there any PAEA representative that would like to make some announcements this evening? Nope. All right. We do have a registered citizen's comment, and I know that Mr. Lojic is on the meeting, so I will let him address the board.
Hi, how are you?
Good, we can hear you, sir.
Okay. I just have a couple of concerns about the upcoming roof project. Have we talked about that for a few minutes? I have a couple of questions and maybe a couple of ones to make.
Go ahead.
The one question I'd like to have is the Pencrest School District is using a roof consultant to write their plans and specs, and I was wondering why we're using a roof consultant who works for the Garland Company, which is the roofing manufacturer, which he's using instead of an architect? Why aren't we using an architect in lieu of a roof consultant?
I think that we can answer your questions, but I can't answer them right this minute, sir. I mean, I'm obviously not a roofing consultant, but what I can do is I can put my email address in the chat, and you can call and you can come in and meet with us. If you would like to make some statements to the board, I think you can. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we had a pre-bid meeting the other day at Maplewood High School, and we picked the plans and specs up out there with the bid form. And on the bid form, there's no other option for a roofing system equivalency for the third-year warranty besides a Garland, I mean, the Garland Roof, which the Garland Roof is probably one of the most expensive roofing materials on the market. And I think the school district could really save a lot of money by opening up some other options.
Yep, I understand. I think the majority of our roofs here are Trunko roofs, but we do have some Garland roofs. I know that there was the roof that was put on about two, three years ago. Yeah, yeah, I think so.
But I've been a roofer for thirty-three years, and I've seen all aspects of the trade, from the bidding process to the application of it to deliver the warranties. And I believe that we, that the district can save hundreds of thousands of dollars by going with another roof manufacturer.
Okay, is it now another roof manufacturer? We still talking the same warranty, the same specs?
There are other manufacturers out there that provide third-year warranties that are way less money than what you would pay for a garlic roof. I mean, you could go with, even a rubber roof, they provide a third-year warranty. Suprema, they have systems that they provide also a third-year warranty.
I put my email in the chat.
Even if you went with twenty-five-year warranty with a rubber roof, after that warranty is exceeded, you can coat those rubber roofs and get another roof out.
Second.
And I think the district could save some money. It could use that money to address other issues up there like flashing heights, the through-wall flashings on the roof, or when the building was built, those splashings weren't high enough. You would have enough money to fix those. And if the architect was hired and he looked at that, he could address some of these issues and give different options. The way things are, they're gonna leave all those splashings in place, which they're not high enough, but at least if you go with another, you know, a cheaper option, you would have enough money to address those issues.
Okay, I'll tell you what, sir. If you wanna reach out to me, I can certainly set a meeting with yourself, whether it's the Facilities Committee or the Facilities Director, but I understand what you're saying. And I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we move to the Athletic Committee? Mr. Golic, chairman?
Yep. All right. Item A, recommend approval to accept the resignations of the following coaches. On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. It's been put on the floor and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval to employ the following coaches. On behalf of the committee, I'll make that motion.
Second. It's been approved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval to permit participation in the following athletic events. In light of the Governor's announcement and the Secretary of Health's announcement, I have put a line through all of the items that are scheduled between now and the January third mandated closure. I've been pretty consistent with not approving athletic travel at this time, so I'll call on someone else to make that motion, please.
I so moved. Okay, the motion has been put on the floor and second. All in favor, say.
Do a roll call. Discussion.
Roll call.
You want to do a roll call?
Do a roll call, please.
All right.
Roll call.
No, I just thought you should, in case somebody else wanted.
Louis G. was asking if there's any discussion on this. I don't have any of the people that are on your, you've got board members that are...
Go ahead. Do you have any discussion?
No, I didn't have anything to discuss. I just was suggesting that you say discussion, in case anyone else had something to say.
Yeah, I heard that, yes.
Okay, all right, we're good.
The motion's been placed on the floor and it's been second.
No, we're putting this, this is a roll call vote.
Only the ones in January, though? Is that what we're doing?
These are the ones that are not scratched out.
Oh, you put lines...
Yeah, I put lines...
Scratched out on that.
So we're doing a roll call vote to approve the participation in the athletic events as listed that aren't scratched out.
Anything before January?
Anything prior to January third has been eliminated.
Brown and Golic, and we'll call Mr. Brooks.
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Yes.
Mr. Golic?
No.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch? Oh. Mr. Valeski?
Yes.
Education Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached affiliation agreement with Gannon University.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been set on the floor and second. All eyes. All in favor?
Aye.
All those against, opposed? Motion's been passed and approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached agreement with the Carrington Foundation.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. It's been, motion's been second. All those in favor? Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, chairman. All we have is an update for the GISA project. We had a kickoff meeting last week. We've looked at some conversations about how to get started, if possible, Maplewood. We've noted that there is a heck of a lot of asbestos tile, and we're gonna be tight to get it all up over the summer, so we're gonna try to do some of the abatement in the gym, the locker rooms, and the hallway over the Easter recess. Sorry, Christmas break. So we're gonna work on that. Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the attached treasurer's reports.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Any discussion this time? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been approved.
Item B, recommend approval of attached disbursements.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the resolution not to exceed the Act One index for the 21-22 school year.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the sub-grant contracts with Northwestern Tri-County Intermediate Unit Five for the 2021 IDEA pass-through grants.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval to authorize administration to advertise and/or otherwise request bids, quotes for products and services to be purchased during the 21-22 fiscal year. All bids and quotes are subject to board approval.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item F is just for information. We had that at the work session, so I'm not gonna make any comments. Personnel Committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, recommend approval to accept the following resignations. Why doesn't someone do it here while it's so?
On behalf of the... So moved.
Sorry.
We'll get here.
Do we have a second? Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the leaves of absence.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval to employ Amanda Porter as a director of technology effective January one, 2021. Salary and benefits will be in accordance with the Act 93 compensation plan.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Congratulations to Ms. Amanda Porter.
Yes. Item D, recommend approval employee Jessica Peters as an eight-hour custodian assigned at Cambridge Brady Junior Senior High School, effective December fourteenth, 2020.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? No discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval of a support staff member of the support sick, staff sick leave bank access up to nineteen sick bank days, as recommended by the support sick bank leave... I'm changing this motion next time. As read, or as written.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Dr. Seuss wrote this.
Do we have a second? Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Item F, recommend approval of following volunteers as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved. Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion at this time? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved.
Policy Committee, Mr. D. Francesco, chairman. Item A is recommend approval of the attached policies. There's about seven of them there. I think we've had them on for about two months now.
Yep. Do we have a second? Second. Motion's been second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
State Schools Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. We have no voting items today. Crawford County Period Technical Center report, Mr. Johnson, representative.
I was working, so I didn't get to attend. I don't know if anybody else did.
Who's Zooming? No report. Intermediate Unit Five report, Mr. Brooks, representative. May I report, Mr. Brooks?
There was no meeting last month.
PSBA Legislature report, Mr. Golic, representative.
No report.
No report. Brings us to new business.
New business this time.
Brings us to board member remarks.
Board member remarks. Let's start with our members on the virtual.
All right.
Jeff Brooks, you wanna be first?
Sure. This is a very interesting town to be involved in public education. I'd like to commend our staff and our parents and our students for being so flexible. We are making changes every week based on ever-changing guidance, and it's very difficult for the families to make adjustments to this on the fly, for our students and our parents and our coaches and our entire community. So I would like to say that we will get through this. I appreciate the leadership shown by the administration and the board. And beyond that, to go to some of the things we talked about at the beginning of this meeting, during the fall, I think that our students really showed how dedicated they are to school and to athletics and to their extracurriculars, as shown by, I think, four All-State selections in volleyball, outstanding performance by soccer. Our athletes and our kids are out there, they're resilient, they're doing great, and we're gonna get through this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Mrs. Davis, any comments?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? I think you said echo what Jeff said and kind of put my two cents in on top of that. I think like a mom, and this time that we're in is very unique. I'm so grateful for the teachers and the flexibility and the dedication that they're showing. The students, no matter where they're learning, they think they're doing their best, and it's challenging. I have a concern as we make these motions and we vote to keep schools open, or whether to or whether not to, whether to participate in sports, whether not to. to or whether not to, whether to participate in sports, whether or not to, and I just feel like I need to just reiterate that we're keeping things open and we're doing our best to make things available. But families really have the last choice when it comes to their children. If they don't feel it's right for their children, then they're able to make those decisions too, and no one would hold it against them if they made those decisions. So I just, I don't know, maybe it doesn't need to be said, but I just feel like I wanted to say that. There's so many options available, and we are so grateful to have those options, so we can make the right choice for our families. So thank you to all of Pancreas for everything, and whatever portion or whatever part you're playing, we're grateful.
Thanks, Mr. Davis. Mr. Valeski?
Yeah, I don't really have anything that you think.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gulick?
I guess first of all, I just want to congratulate Amanda Porter on being hired as our new Tech Director. I was very impressed with her when she spoke to the board the other night, and I think she'll do a wonderful job. And I'm so horrible with technology that she doesn't know this yet, but she'll probably be on my speed dial. But anyway, congratulations to all the fall athletes, especially the ones that we recognize tonight. Represents a lot of hard work, practice and so forth, and a lot of dedication by the parents as well, so congratulations for that. I guess good luck to the winter sports teams when they're allowed to play, January 5th, hopefully, but good luck to them. And I guess lastly, I'll just wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and everybody stay happy, healthy, and safe.
Mr. Brown? Yes. First off, I would also like to congratulate the girls' soccer and volleyball teams from Maplewood and Segretown and Sam Hetrick on his accomplishment across country. It just goes to show the resilience of the students and the staff here at Pancreas School District. Those kids did a fantastic job, and all the sports did a good job. Also, congratulations to Amanda Porter. It's awesome to have you on board. I hope you have your, your work will be cut out for you. And also, you know, the staff and our administration, they are doing a fantastic job. The guidelines are changing all the time. I'm not envious of them at all. Dr. Glasspool is keeping the ship in the right direction, and I just want to thank him personally. He's doing a great job. And last but not least, hey, it is Christmas, so I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we will get through this. Just stay strong and stay safe, and just remember what the holiday is really about, and family is important. That's all. Jeff?
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Amanda Porter for coming on board. I think she's going to be a very good asset to our team. I'd also like to congratulate our sports teams. They did awesome, set new records. Very impressive, especially in light of the circumstances that we've been dealt. I'd like to thank our staff and the administration for doing everything possible to keep things going. Want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Enjoy your family, stay safe. And lastly, since we got it on TV, I got a lot of emails, well, I won't say a lot, but I got several emails about people not being able to get on the Zoom meeting. So our superintendent has increased our license, so there's no excuse for people not being able to get on now. So if you're watching this on replay next meeting, you should be able to join us on Zoom.
Mr. Glasspool? You're an honorable member, too, you know. I have no comments. Well, first I would like to wish a bit, send my best wishes to our President of the Board, Mark Giraud, still under recovery now, and I hope he's going to get a total quick recovery and join us again. Also, you know, I'd like to ask all the parents, please have patience. In January, hopefully, all our kids are going to come back to school, to the buildings, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue to educate our kids the way it's supposed to. Unfortunately, things can happen, just like our president. He's got a different, he doesn't have the virus, he's got other problems, just like many people that always come up with something else other than the virus. And that's, unfortunately, that's how we humans, we can always come up with something that we don't want to go through. And in January, I believe, everything's going to go back to semi-normal, I hope. And just hang on there, parents and your kids, and we'll be doing fine. We have a good leadership in our district, and they will be thinking about the best for your children. Thank you.
Board met in executive session on the 3rd and 10th for personnel litigation and safety concerns.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Be in the jury.